We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to call the, to order the special city council meeting. The time is six thirty-three PM. City, uh, city clerk Duarte, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ferometa is excused. Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Pemberton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa.
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. Now it's time for our invocation and flag salute. To lead us in the invocation, we'd like to welcome former Downey mayor Rick Rodriguez. And please remain standing after the invocation for the flag salute. Welcome, Mayor Rodriguez.
I think this is the first time in my life that I've been in this room without a suit and tie. But I'm glad you guys are wearing suit and tie. That's very important. So thank you for allowing me to be here, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests and family honored citizens of our city and city officials. Because you gathered here today to witness this swearing-in of our new mayor and Hector Sosa. You know, let's, let's first take a moment to reflect on the importance of what he's going to go through and the significance of the importance of this occasion. And today, we come together not only to celebrate new leadership, but also to reaffirm our commitment to our community and its values. So please join me now in a prayerful moment. Let's bow our heads and let's pray. Lord, as we come together today collectively, we ask for your wisdom and guidance for our new mayor. May he be blessed with strength and serve our community with integrity, compassion, and said best commitment to justice. Grant him the ability to listen to the voices of all of our citizens and lead our community with humility and courage. As our new mayor embarks on this important journey, may he be, he may be inspired to foster unity, promote progress, enhance the well-being of every individual in our city. We pray for collaboration among the members of our city council, so that together we may build a brighter future for our community. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you in this place and openly worship you. And we are reminded today that in our America, in our country, we're still considered one great nation under God. Let us embrace this moment with hope and optimism, and may our collective efforts lead us to a thriving city. We pray all of this in Jesus' name and all God's people said. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to lead us in the flag salute from the incoming first family of Downey, the Sosas, please welcome Lucas and Joshua Sosa.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please eat. So I would like to take this time to acknowledge some former mayors and council members in the audience tonight. Please stand when I call your name to be recognized. Former district attorney George Gascon, former mayor Rick Rodriguez, former mayor Mario Guerra, council member from the city of Artisia Monica Manolo, mayor from the city of Compton Emma Sharif, council member from the city of Artisia Sahir Ahir, one of Downey's own, Sarito's College Board of Trustees, Area One Mariana Pacheco. We also have representatives from Senator Bob Archeletta's office, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office, and Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco's office. A round of applause for them, please. I would also like to acknowledge the city of Downey commissioners, board members, and committee members that are in the audience tonight. Please stand and be recognized. Our commissioners, Jeanne Woods, thank you. Dosa, thank you. Servia, thank you. Mr. Gomez, gracias. We also have in the audience, well, I already introduced the representatives. So now we'll just get down to the presentations. I will give my final address and we'll get to, I know what most people here are waiting for, the swearing-in of our incoming mayor. So let's get on with the outgoing speech first. For those individuals who are standing, if you could take a seat actually over here in the row, that'd be great. So, por favor. It's a fire code, actually. I'm supposed to keep my eyes on that. All right. So this is the mayor's outgoing speech, and for me, really, the bulk of what we've done, because even though it's my outgoing speech, the work that we do in the city is really the work of this council. It is very easy for us to take credit for whatever thing goes, like Sprouts, we're all going to take credit for Sprouts, right? But really, it is, it is a unified council, a hard-working council. And even though we agree to disagree, I think you will agree that we're very civilized, that we represent the city well, that we really truly put the interests of this city, of you, our residents, of our business owners, first, before our egos. So I want to thank my colleagues, first and foremost, for all the work that they have put into the city. Because the presentation you're going to see, it really is a team effort, Team Downey. First and foremost, I want to thank, of course, my amazing husband. He's on his way. My husband is a nurse practitioner in psychiatry, and he deals with system-impacted individuals, a lot of people trying to re-enter the system from the criminal justice system. So a lot of parolees, probationers. And one of his patients had a very bad episode, so he should be here shortly. But I do want to thank my amazing husband. It's tough sometimes to be in these positions. I thought about running for office early on, but I always waited, and part of it was because of the amount of work that goes into it. As you know, I was a public servant for 30 years, a teacher for six, and then a deputy DA for 25, 31 years of public service. It's a nine-to-five job. It's very stressful in the morning, because you got to be somewhere at like 7:30 or 8:30, because there's a room full of people waiting for you. So it would be difficult for me to be a government-paid employee, and I'm out taking pictures at red ribbon cuttings. The haters, because you always have haters, are going to use that against you. So I just waited till I retired. And I want to thank Alex Saab for his support, because I did follow Alex Saab. And Alex and prior councils have done amazing things for this city. I want to thank my friends, people who supported me through the difficult times. For the first year, when there was a change at the end of the first year, and the administration, there were a lot of things that were said. And I want to remind people that sometimes even the top 500 fortune companies change CEOs, or there's a change of administration. The city went through a transition where we went from the top, new city manager, thank you Roger Bradley, and new city heads, department heads, all around. You have basically an entirely new team that was put together by this council. Please remember, next time you want to make accusations against an individual in this council, that it takes three to party people. All right? So if a decision is made, it takes three. It's a majority. Be cognizant of that. These are the individuals you elected. And if a majority made a decision, we accept it and we move on. All right? And so I think Downey, we do a really good job of that. But it was my friends who I turned to when, when people were coming with different narratives, attacking me and my values and my morals, and questioning why we're doing certain thing. I constantly remind people that my personal investments, my largest investments that I've made in my life are in this city. So please remember that each of these individuals has a vested interest in this city. So when they take those votes, if you don't agree with them, perhaps you should invite them to coffee and ask them why they voted that way. Maybe they can tell you and explain to you why. My husband is here now. Please stand and be recognized, Henry. Thank you so much for all your support. This is a team effort. I think Noah walked as much as, I think he walked more than I did. I told him, maybe you should be the one running. He's less controversial than me. And I thank him for bringing me to sanity sometimes when it appeared I was going off the edge. Thank you for reminding me that we signed up to do this for the betterment of our city. And thank you for keeping me focused. I absolutely love you. Hans, my campaign manager, please stand and be recognized. There he is. That guy. Yeah. So if you want to know who runs Downey, it's Hans Fritz from Jalisco, Mexico. Hans has single-handedly gotten the five of us selected. And I think we're all very grateful to Hans, because we do have big egos. And Hans somehow manages to deal with us in those tough times. We had an amazing clean campaign. We raised a hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to say it. I'm very thankful to my donors, because they have supported me in this weird ambition that I have to be a politician. And I tell them, God's going to give it back to you tenfold, because we're doing good things here for the city. And so you're investing in Downey. And so thank you for your investment. And please hold me accountable. I always tell my donors, my supporters, hold me accountable. If you think I'm doing something wrong, if you don't agree with something, hold me accountable. We're going to do this for four more years. And I, I do pretty well accepting criticism. Just give me an opportunity. I prefer to hear about it over coffee. Okay? Not, I don't want to hear about it on social media. Honestly, we have open-door policies, and I think we are all amenable to some criticism. But email us, call us, invite us to coffee. We'd love to have a conversation. My volunteers, the staff for my campaign, we did it. Thank you. It was 65%. We had predicted 60%. But we, I think it, we, our messaging resonated with the residents. And it was a back-to-basics platform. If you want to ask what, what was Trujillo's legacy, I would like to think that it was a back-to-basics platform. I, I entered this as a resident of the city for 33 years, who in my opinion, had seen my city decay. I was seeing things in the city that I was not happy about. And I wanted to do something about it. Aesthetically, there was a, there were a lot of things that I didn't agree with. And that's why I jumped into this. And we came up with the Trujillo Brass Plan that started with B. During the pandemic, we learned about the digital divide, the importance of having connectivity, especially for kids. And we did that. We have the fiber wire. You see the cutting in all our streets. It's here. We're ready. We're doing that. The R was basically residential streets. I didn't like the way the streets were looking. I was tell the city manager, looks like Tijuana. This is Downey, California. Let's do something about it. This is basic. There are still streets in the fourth district. I walk over there. These houses are 1.5 million dollar, 1.5 million dollar houses. And we should be ashamed of the streets in some of those areas. When I got into this council, I remember one of the first presentations was the conditions of our residential streets. Don't confuse your main arteries, Firestone, Imperial. Don't confuse those with the residential streets. Okay? The conversation was residential streets. And I remember the pie chart. And I remember poor and very poor were 40%. When I got on this council, residential streets in Downey, poor, very poor, 40% of those were. So, look, I'm not that good at math, but if only 60% of your streets are acceptable, if you only got a 60 on a test, what grade is that, chief? Isn't that like a D? 60%. Come on, people. Elementary test? It's a D. See, the mayor Compton knows. It's a D. Unacceptable. So what do we do? We approve the largest single infrastructure investment in residential streets. And I want to thank this council for having the courage to do that. 45 million in one year. The machinery's out there every day. You're seeing it. People, it takes six months for the street to curate after they lay it. Please don't call us after six months. You got to let it settle in. These streets are coming out beautiful. All right? That's what I wanted to see. A, alleys. We hadn't touched an alley in over 40 years. I remember my first murder case in Compton, unfortunately. It was a tragic death of a young girl in an alley. And for some reason, I had this thing about alleys. Nothing good happens in alleys. And I would look at the alleys in Downey, and they looked horrible to me. So what did we did? This council approved alley improvement projects. And now we have, we have it laid out. There are 26 alleys. We're five in. We have 21 left. Sidewalks, streetlights. That's what my platform was about. But the number one thing that residents always want from us is what? Protection. Protection of their homes, protection of their families. And I like to think, and I know, because I look at the data, they were one of the safest cities in the southeast part of LA County. And I think our chief and his amazing team, and the prior chief during my administration had a lot to do with that. I want to thank you for letting our officers know that we need more visibility, that we want to see them. It makes us feel safer. I want to thank the residents who taxed themselves so we could get more officers. We hear you. Downey is a destination in the southeast part of this county. We invite people to come to Downey to shop. Come spend your money in Downey. Come downtown Downey. Come to the Landing. Come to the Promenade. If you're inviting thousands of people more every day, you need more security. You need more enforcement. And we're going to do that. Because if you want to continue to be that destination, we're going to need more security. So we've done that here. We talk about your quality of life almost daily. We know about the issue of homelessness, and we're working on that. And I want to thank District Attorney Gascon, because when you heard all the concerns, he actually created a position and gave it to me to be the community affairs liaison with 88 cities. The district attorney's office had never had a community liaison. And my job was simple. He said, I want to hear the concerns. And so in Downey, we had lots of concerns. And I'll tell you what, Craig St. Mitchell, the DIC, knew that we were going to call if we had concerns. He knew that he was going to hear from us, and they worked with us. So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for working with Downey. Because when it comes to homelessness and that quality of life issue, it has to be a partnership with the county. And I'm so thankful that our police officers continue to follow policy that says we always respond. We always respond. We assess the situation, and if somebody needs to be removed, they will be removed. And if somebody is a frequent flyer, we're going to bring that person to the attention of the local Downey DA's office, because they need to hear this. Those relationships are important for quality of life. So I want to thank Janice Hahn. I want to thank our state senator, who always took my calls, and our state assemblywoman when it comes to Caltrans, and the entrances and the exits to the city that I still think are very dirty. Today, I got off the freeway when I was going to Commerce. They had that beautiful casino. Man, it's so filthy. I was like, who's, I don't want to call people out, but I was like, if I was a council member in this city, someone would get a call about this freeway entrance. Because we are surrounded not by one, not two, not three, but four freeways, people. You want to talk about air pollution? You want to talk about the homeless problem under the freeways? It impacts us the most. And we went to Sacramento, and we told them when it comes to Downey and those issues, we should be priority. And they listened. Because now Ari Rees, if he's here, God bless his heart, the Caltrans are coming around more often. Those are the things we kind of do. The city staff, they're the ones who do all the work. I want to thank our, our city manager and our staff for doing all the work, for taking all my calls, responding to all the text messages. There's five of us that are constantly going at it. And this gentleman, Mr. Bradley, takes the brunt of it. Roger, I want to thank you for your patience, because it's not easy dealing with us. But you have always maintained a calm demeanor about you, which leads me to believe we're okay. Today, I texted him, and the issue was plans. One of the biggest complaints we were gaining from people is their plans. And let me tell you, I felt so good when I got these text messages. And the issue was, a business submitted their plans. They will call us and say, hey, can you help me out? Can you expedite the plans? Right? I'll pay more money if I have to. So I'm like, well, let me ask the city manager. And we're talking about, about plans. And this is what he said. He says, Mayor, it usually takes a maximum of 14 days to get through plan check, assuming everything is in order. While we do not have an expedited service, we have some of the fastest review times you are going to find from any city. I did my job. We did our job, because we did that. There was issues. There were issues going on at those desks, and we would hear about them. We hear you, Downey. We're working on those things. And I want to thank the staff for that. So when it comes to what we got done, I want to highlight some of my personal favorites beyond the Trujillo Brass Plan. A proactive code enforcement. We have people now that go out and look for problems. Because before, I, I We have people now that go out and look for problems because before I would ask staff, well, didn't anybody, didn't anybody else see the mattress that I saw in Stuart and Gray? Isn't there somebody on city staff that saw the mattress? Well, we rely on residents to notify us through the app. No. Why should, why shouldn't my residents be responsible? Why should they be the responsible ones for that? Let's get some staff in here. Now, look, stuff costs money. Downey is expensive, but if you want the best, it's going to cost you and we deliver. We deliver top service and I wanted, we wanted a proactive code enforcement who's going to go look for these issues, especially the Christmas lights after February, after the little Reyes, like your Christmas light should come down, people. It's just not right. Many things like that, but you know what? Those things make a difference because people expect a certain aesthetic look from the city. They tell me, when I go into Downey, it feels different. Is that right? It is. Because we're looking for these things. We're not going to let the neon signs and all the plaster boards. It just aesthetically, there are certain standards that need to be kept in this city and we're keeping those. Don't park on your lawn, people. Just don't park on your lawn, man. It's just not necessary. Okay? Pet peeve. Anyways, so the pulse of life. I went on a trip. I was very fortunate to have been invited. Downey's international, you guys. When we go to Guadalajara, we go to Jalisco, they know about Downey. I was invited to Zapopan, to their police station. Zapopan is an affluent city outside of Guadalajara and they had something called El Pulso de Vida. It's a gadget. I'm going to call it a keychain that they would give to women. Most of the time it's women who report domestic violence, although in the United States, one out of every four victims is a man. If you are a victim of domestic violence in Downey and you go get a restraining order in Whittier to show that you're afraid, you come to our police station and we're going to give you something that we're not going to show the public. And it gives you an alternative way of calling us and letting us know you're in danger. Because in domestic violence cases, the assailant will frequently arrive. If they're going to reoffend, it's typically in the first 60 days. And if they're going to come back, the first thing they take away from the victim is their phone. Back when we had landlines, our police reports would say, he pulled out the phone from the wall, right? Because they would yank it out. Well, now they take your phone and whatever. The victim will have the pulse of life on them and can call us. The signal comes to our dispatch. We know who he or she is because we assign them the item and we know who the assailant is and it gives a GPS single, signal. We're going to save lives in Downey because of the pulse of life. So I want you to know, when it comes to public safety, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to start looking for a bracelet. Hopefully, we're going to talk about this that will identify seniors, most of the time, who have Alzheimer's, who walk away from home. Sometimes a caretaker, and it happened to my cousin a month ago, and this is why I raised it. My cousin went to the bathroom and my uncle got out. El Cerrito, California, it was all over the news. They were looking for my uncle, my uncle Pepe. They found him, thank God, three hours later. He had started to walk his old gardener route. He was a route, a gardener and he was walking his route. In Downey, we're going to give bracelets to patients, to individuals who have Alzheimer's. So if that happens to one of your families, we're going to find your loved one immediately. And so we're going to talk about that. And of course, we're going to talk about quality of life. The double decker bus tour. I like traveling and when I go to European cities, we do the double decker red bus tour. Henry already knows. If we're in Paris, we're going to do the double deck. So I thought, well, what if we brought a double decker red bus to Downey and we did a historic tour? And then we added the holiday tour. Thank you to the council, they approved it. It sold out in, what, Dorothy, 30 minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And people are mad. So I'm proud of that. Please take the tour. I hope it's an annual thing. Art, culture and history. I do believe, and this council believes because they budgeted a line item, that when it comes to art, culture and history, the quality of life of our residents is better with art, culture and history. And there's so much history in Downey. We really have to compete, continue to fight to preserve that. So I was very proud to work with the Historic Society, the Conservancy, to keep that history alive. How many of you saw the space shuttle, the mockup? I mean, we are the birthplace of the Apollo space program. I don't know if you guys are excited about that as I am, right? The space shuttle, not just the oldest McDonald's, the Taco Bell, the carpenters, but that space program, that history is ours. I tell people when I'm in my international travels, cuando vean la luna, when you see the moon, the moon, I want you to think about Downey. Because when man got to the moon, all that was imagined and created in Downey. We are the birthplace of the Apollo space program and we have to keep that history alive. The YMCA, the space shuttle expansion and the Shake Shack and all that. But the last thing I want to thank the council for is the Pride Festival. You know about my family, who my loved ones are, it's just part of the, just part of the, the light, you sign up for this, people know all your business. Right? So look, and I, and I didn't want to be the gay mayor. If you go back and you look, when I was sworn in, there were no articles that pointed out the fact of my sexuality. Because we never wanted to do that. I just wanted to be the mayor. So there was an issue with the pride flag and then there was the festival. And I want to thank the council for supporting the festival because in Downey, we're very diverse. You could be with Argentinos, with con los Cubanos, and then the Los Jaliscienses are over here, right? And then don't forget the Greeks. We have the largest Greek festival in the county here in Downey. There's a lot of diversity here, folks. So when it comes to public safety, part of what we're supposed to do is provide protection. So you have a marginalized community. All right? The LGBT is a protected class, you guys. The Constitution and the US Supreme Courts have said, the community is a protected class. I get voted onto this council and I don't even make motions for this. All of a sudden they're throwing out pride picnics and all this stuff and it started this momentum in Downey that I didn't expect. I didn't expect that we were going to be talking about those social issues. We don't do that in Downey. Right? And it happened so fast and we were in the news this summer and I didn't like it. I didn't ask for it. I didn't want to talk to the LA Times about these controversial issues. I just wanted to do my Trujillo Brass Plan. But I got thrown into this and it became clear to me that I do have an obligation to speak up. And, and maybe that's why God gave me this podium for what I'm about to say. Listen, when it comes to this community, I worry about the kids. I'm being told that statistically, 41% of LGBTQ youth today will contemplate suicide. They're here in Downey, folks, these youth. They have clubs. I've met them. They have clubs in Downey High School, they have at Warren High School. I've met these kids that you read about. I've yet to hear about any straight kids who are being bullied in school. Listen to what I said. Have you ever heard of a straight kid? Daddy, daddy, I'm being bullied because I'm straight? How about a straight kid who gets kicked out of his or her house because they're straight? They go to a shelter, mom and dad kicked me out because I'm straight. It doesn't happen that way. And the kids who are contemplating suicide, I've yet to hear of a straight teen who tonight is like, oh, I want to end my life because being straight is horrible. No. And I haven't heard of any straight kid who got killed because his evil mom and boyfriend perceived him to be gay at eight, Gabriel Fernandez and Anthony Olivas. So just keep that in mind, folks. When it comes to pride festivals, it's not a party. I mean, people are literally trying to survive. So if you put up a flag in front of Downey High School, I thought that that would be part of public safety. To let kids know that in Downey, it doesn't matter. Get good grades, follow the laws, be a good neighbor, be a good resident. That stuff, it doesn't matter. If you get pulled over by the police, they're going to treat you right in Downey. So another four years, it's going to be about the Trujillo Brass Plan. We're going to continue to keep you safe. And here's a little video of what we did as a council. But first, I want to congratulate Hector Sosa. So Hector is one of the hardest working guys and he is like the leader in our group chat. Where's everybody? He's, you're going to be a great mayor. He's really good about keeping us together. Who's getting the certificate? He's on it. And so we're very lucky to have you, Daisy, the family. I wish you a year of success. It's going to be crazy. Everybody's going to want to be, they're going to want you there and you got to go represent. So I wish you the best of luck. I know we're in great hands. Congratulations, man. And now a little video about what we did together. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, can I have you come down to the podium for special presentations, please? I will now call special guests in attendance this evening forward for presentations to outgoing Mayor Trujillo. Former District Attorney George Gascon, please come forward.
Gracias.
Congratulations. Gracias, Mario. Good evening, everyone. It's really an honor being here today to present this certificate of appreciation to a friend and a colleague. But someone has given so much to our community for so many years. You know, Mario was not only a teacher for six years, as he indicated, but he was also a prosecutor for 25 years. Being a prosecutor is not an easy job. You know, it's one that is often thankless. People second guess what you do. Often the results are not what people expect. And walking a fine line to ensure that you're doing everything that you can for the safety of our community and doing it often under conditions that are very challenging and working in an office that represents the largest county in the country. As a matter of fact, we're larger than that many states and we're larger than many countries. We're over 10 million people. And often just traveling from one end of the county to another to handle a case could take you two hours on the road. And Mario did that for 25 years and he did it as a line prosecutor, he did it as a supervisor, and then towards the end of his career, during COVID, during some of the most difficult times in our country, Mario became the voice of our office in dealing with ADA cities in this great county of us. ADA cities that is almost like dealing with ADA nations because they all have their own personalities. They have their own needs. We go from extreme wealth to extreme poverty. Cities that are very active as Downey, my former residence for many years. I almost want to come back to Downey now after I hear all the things that you guys are doing. And you know, then being a city council member and working again through very difficult times to represent a very diverse community. So Mario, I want to tell you on behalf of myself, but on behalf of the men and women of the district attorney's office, many that consider you not only a coworker, but a dear friend, we want to recognize you for all you've done for our community and the things that you will continue to do. Congratulations, brother.
Thank you. Gracias. Thanks, Joe. He's a lot.
Thank you. All right. Picture?
I think I should have been wearing a suit too. I heard the other mayor said it's the first time I go to the city council meeting without a suit. That's what you get when you retire.
So third, my account being one of the pictures of being George. Take a couple so they can get home. Thank you, George.
It's a real question, Mario.
From the city of Artisia, council member Monica Manalo.
Vecina.
That's her amigo.
Gracias.
This is my colleague and newly elected council member, Zeal Ahir. She's also joining me this evening to make this presentation to the outgoing mayor. We are presenting you in Artisia instead of presenting you with a certificate, we are presenting you with the official Artisia challenge coin. Because we want to challenge you to continue serving with the passion, the grace and the respect that you and the respect that you serve your city with, Mario. I have seen you with Contract Cities. First of all, it's the most stylish, one of the most stylish mayors I know in this area, right? Definitely, but also.
My husband dresses me.
I know. I know, I remember from Contract Cities. But one of the most, this gentleman, when he is at the events, whether we're in Sacramento or Indian Wells or wherever we have to be for Contract Cities, he is representing your city with such pride and such gusto. And I just pray, as we all do, from your neighboring cities, that you will continue to have that fire in you as you serve. So here is the official Challenge Coin of the City of Artesia.
Gracias.
With our, with our respect and congratulations.
From the City of.
And a mini, and a mini version of our pin, so you can wear it contracts. I'll come on this side and see if. This is her first official event.
We're getting a train line by 2035 and it starts in Artesia. And then it's going to go, it ends in Artesia, sorry. Thank you, Artesia.
From the City of Compton, Mayor.
Emma Sharif. Do you know that the median price of a house in Compton is like up to 600,000? I don't know what you're doing, but keep it up.
Thank you. I want to say first, let me say that you read my whole campaign statement up here a few minutes ago. Yes, my streets, alleys. Yeah, those are the things that we have to continue to work on every day. So I really wanted, when I, when he was doing this, I'm like, wow, he sounds like he, my whole campaign statement is here. So thank you. But I did want to be here to really thank you for your, the year that you served as mayor here. And here, you've done an amazing job.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you. You know, I'm always watching people, especially mayors, because I came in '21. And so I'm watching those that have been here before me, taking a look to see how you've done things and what you're doing. And actually, so I can actually kind of emulate what you, you have gone and done, what you've done already. So I really want to say thank you for being an example setter. Thank you. But this is a City of, so from the City of Compton, this certificate of honor presented to Mario Trujillo. I've got that right. Mayor of the City of Downey. On behalf of Mayor Emma Sharif, this Compton City Council and the great citizens of the City of Compton, we would like to commend you on your commitment, your exemplary service, and your civic contribution to the residents of Downey. Your leadership, sacrifice, and dedication has been a true inspiration for many. Best wishes and continued success are hereby extended from the City of Compton. Presented on this 12th day of December, 2024, is signed by me, Mayor Emma Sharif, Councilwoman Deidre Duhardt from District 1, Councilwoman District 2, Andre Spicer, Councilwoman from District 3, Jonathan Bauer, and Councilwoman from District 4, Lily P. Darden. Thank you for your service.
From the City of Linwood, Councilmember Juan Muñoz-Guevara.
Greetings from the City of Linwood. Glad to be here with our neighboring city of Downey, not too far away. And, and so I bring greetings on behalf of our Mayor Rita Soto, our Mayor Pro Tem Gabriela Camacho, our new councilwoman, Lorraine Avila Moore, and our new member, Luis Herardo Cuellar. We brought a, we adopted a proclamation here on behalf of the council to, to honor our great neighbor and, and all the work you've done. I, I won't sort of belabor a lot of the points that have already been stated. We know that you've done tremendous work on behalf of not only your city, but our region, and have really elevated the, the toughest regional issues that we need to the state level, as my colleague from the City of Artesia stated, through the Contract Cities Association and other legislative bodies and associations that we're a part of. I'll just read the last two clauses here. So whereas Mayor Trujillo continues to be a role model, balancing his professional achievements with his commitment to family and community, passing on his children, to his children, the values of respect, service, and patriotism. Whereas Mayor Mario Trujillo played a key role in driving positive change, championing education, justice, and civic engagement, while also strengthening community ties across the City of Downey. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Linwood wishes to express their deep appreciation to Mario Trujillo for his honorable term as mayor with the City of Downey and for his outstanding efforts in representing the Downey community. So thank you and congratulations.
From Sarito's College, Dr. Jose Fierro, President and Board Trustee, Mariana Pacheco.
From Sarito's College, we want to congratulate Mario Trujillo for his year of service that he has given to the city. He has done so much. And if you don't know, he's also a great advocate in regards to the youth. And he believes firmly in education and firmly progressing our youth along the way to make sure that they succeed. And you succeed through education. And thanks to his involvement with the college and helping us in different ways, we have been able to partner up in, in different things here with the City of Downey. So thank you so much for everything that you do.
Our Assemblywoman, she's currently in a legislative trip in the Philippines. Thank you.
From the Downey Unified School District, a board member, Linda Saldana. She's Vice President.
Good evening, Mayor Trujillo. Downey Unified has a beautiful relationship with the City of Downey. And we have strong schools, which is also part of the beautiful connection with strong cities. We have safety. We have a community that wants to be here. And so a lot of that is the collaboration we have with the city and how well we work together. You've been to our football games. You've been to our performances. You've been to our mariachi festival. You had our mariachi students at your State of the City. And so you're a big supporter and we really appreciate that because our students feel safe in the city. And we thank you for all the work you've done. And here's to continuing to providing a good education for all of Downey and surrounding areas.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The following dignitary scent recognitions to outgoing Mayor Trujillo. Senator Bob Archuleta and Assemblymember Blanca Pacheco.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Casares. I'm here on behalf of California State Senator Bob Archuleta. I'm here to present the Certificate of Recognition. Mr. Mario Trujillo, in recognition of your exemplary service as Mayor of the City of Downey during the 2023 through 2024 term, and your unwavering dedication to leading and serving the community. I commend you for your efforts. Your ability to, excuse me, your ability to make difficult decisions while consistently striving to identify the most effective solutions has had a profound impact on both the City of Downey and its residents. On behalf of the 30th Senate District of the State of California, I extend my heartfelt congratulations on your outstanding achievements and wish you continued success in all of your future endeavors. Signed, Senator Bob Archuleta.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Genesis Pampa. I'm here from the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco. Unfortunately, she does find herself out of the country. But trust me and Ms. Pacheco, deep down, she really, really, really wanted to be here. And also Ari Race finds himself out of the country. And I will make sure I give him the shout out you gave him for Caltrans. On behalf of Assemblywoman Pacheco, she will dedicate this and honor you with the certificate, which reads, "Your commitment and dedication have made a lasting impact on the community and have set a standard of excellence for all who serve. Thank you for your invaluable contributions. I wish you continued success in all your future endeavors." Congratulations.
Mayor Trujillo also received recognitions from Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara, the Lakewood City Council, and the, and the Sarito City Council.
Thank you, everybody.
I would like to invite Mayor Pro Tem Sosa to assist with presenting the gavel plaque, pass Mayor Pin, and photo book to outgoing Mayor Trujillo.
Let's hear it one more time for Mayor Trujillo. This is confession, what, first thing is the pin? Thank you. This is a photo album for you?
Thank you.
And a nice plaque with the gavel?
All right.
So he might use this at home, right?
Out of my dad.
Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, man.
I would like to invite the Sosa family to please come forward and join Mayor Pro Tem Sosa. And Fire Chief Herlock, please come forward to administer the oath of office.
Just them right here. Yes, right here.
Okay, okay.
It's a great honor for me to swear in my friend Hector Sosa as the next mayor for the City of Downey. Hector, if you'll repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Hector Sosa.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties about, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm a little thirsty, so. Good evening. Thank you for, for being here. It's truly an honor, a blessing, and a privilege to be standing here before you tonight. I want to thank the good Lord Jesus Christ for giving me this blessing of an opportunity to be here. And I want to thank my family who've traveled from San Francisco, from Colorado, from Georgia, and from Reno Valley. Reno Valley's pretty far, right? Corona too. That's, that's far enough. I'd like to thank my, I have some, my New York Life family here, my fellow Kowanians. And I have some of my childhood friends that I attended Griffiths Middle School with and Warren High School. It's just a few years ago, so. You know, Mario, good job. Let's give it up to Mario, Mayor Mario Trujillo. He mentioned a few of the things that, you know, we're very, we take a lot of pride in, in the City of Downey. He forgot to mention Ike Carley. There you go. Thank you. Metallica's James Hetfield. And most importantly, Weird Al Yankovic. That's right. Yeah, that's right. You're welcome. So listen, guys, I see a lot of old school Downey here. It has nothing to do with age. I'm just saying people have been in Downey for a long time. And this is a special place. It's a very special city. It's a good place to, to work, play, and, and live. It's a good place to work, play, and live. I remember when I was a young kid, you know, the first, I spent the first part of my childhood in the city of Bell. And I remember back then, no one really knew about the city of Bell. So, you know, thank God, or not thank God, but thank that righteous city council in the year 2010 that put us on the map. Thank you. Thank you, too. So I remember when I was a kid, living in the city of Bell, we'd come to Downey, and we'd go to Farrell's. Yes, that's what I'm talking about, old-school Downey. Stonewood Mall used to be an outdoor mall, and we used to go to Farrell's. I used to love going there and trying to eat this big plate of ice cream. And my mom used to take us there all the time. I always knew Downey was a special city, even back then as a kid. And so, you know, we have a lot of good things going for us here. I ended up moving here with my mom when I was 11 years old, along with my brother. And my sister started attending Griffiths Middle School, then went to Warren High School, and we've seen all the changes. You know, back in the day, there wasn't a whole lot of entertainment value here. There wasn't a whole lot of places to dine. The only show in town was Samby's. Remember Samby's? Yeah, that's right. The piano guy. We have our own police and fire department here. That's a big deal. Yes. And I don't know if, some of you don't know this, but, or I think Mario may have mentioned this, but our Fire Chief Dan Hurlock is retiring at the end of this month. And he's a Downey guy, went to Downey High School. I, yeah, let's applaud him. You know, it's, he's a Downey Viking. We overlooked that, but it's all good. You know, I had a short list of about five people that I wanted to have me sworn in. And for his dedication to the city of Downey and his service, and he's just overall a good guy, it was a no-brainer for me to have him sworn in, so it was an honor to have you sworn in. Thank you. Thank you, my friend. And to our beloved Downey PD, thank you so much for being here and showing support. Really appreciate you guys. I've gotten to know a lot of you over the years, even way before I was elected. And I just wanted to, you know, I want to express in front of all these fine people my gratitude for you, and I think it's important for us as local elected officials to really let the public know that we really appreciate law enforcement. And I really appreciate Downey PD, so let's hear it for those guys. We have our own school district here. We have, you know, they're a separate entity, but we have 20 schools in the district. We have fine representation here from Linda Soldania, who I've gotten to know really well over the years. And my wife and I are products of Downey Unified, as well as our sons. And you know, this is, Downey is a very special place, and we're a very collaborative community. There are a lot of nonprofits that work hand-in-hand with each other to provide services and, you know, we have a lot of selfless volunteers who are willing to roll up their sleeves and put the work in for our residents. And that's what makes Downey a special place. And I will say that you don't necessarily, we have 115,000, close to 115,000 residents here. You don't necessarily have to be on city council to make a difference. Before I was elected, I put in, you know, at least 15, 16 years of service to this community. And it's fun. It's fun. It takes a commitment. Takes time away from your work and from your family, but it's a commitment. And I've always, I've always been proud of my service to the community through youth sports at DJA, which is a league that I played in when I was a kid. I see one of my old rival coaches back there. We're friends. But, you know, DJA, West Downey Little League. I, my wife and I volunteered at Calvary Chapel, Pioneer Club's youth ministries. We worked with a lot of our youth. And Gangs Out of Downey, good. Very proactive, preventative organization that provides a lot of resources for our youth to keep them out of trouble, keep them out of gangs, and provide positive mentorship for them. I also had a stint at the Downey Library for one year. And this is probably probably one of my favorite gigs as a volunteer in this beautiful community. I had one assignment, and that was to work with a, he's a 75-year-old man from El Salvador. He had just retired, and he needed help with connecting words. His English was the second language. And so I would meet with him on a weekly basis. And, you know, one day he comes and he gives me, you know, he knew I was a big Dodger fan. And he gives me all kinds of like little knickknacks that have Dodgers on them. He said, "Give these to your sons." My sons were really young at that time. And, you know, I thought that was, that was pretty cool, you know, and we were developing a pretty cool little friendship there. And one day, he just stopped showing up. And I'm like, "Is my tutoring that bad? This guy's not going to show up anymore?" So two, three weeks go by, and I'm like, you know, I called the guy. I said, "Hey, you know, it's Hector from the library, from the city. I just want to see, make sure everything's okay. You stopped showing up." He's like, "No, Hector. No, no, Hector. It's all good. It's, you know what? You helped me. My problem with connecting words is solved. You helped me solve my problem." And that, to me, it was very rewarding. And again, I, those are, it's just a small example of the volunteerism that's available in this community. And that really touched my heart and motivated me to just keep serving this community. I'm also, you know, I mentioned my fellow Kewanians. I just came off being president of the, we have two Kewanian groups here. And these guys do a lot of generous work in this community. I do want to mention, I want to mention one special Kewanian who is very, very gracious and giving in this community. And his name's going to be at that new YMCA here in Downey. I want to mention Ron Kohler. Let's give it up to Ron Kohler. He doesn't like the attention, but I had to give that to him anyways. Thank you, Ron. And then, so I've always, you know, taken pride in my my service to this community. But I, speaking of service to the community, decades of, well, not decade, well, maybe four decades of service to this community, I want to congratulate our newly-appointed Mayor Protem, my friend Dorothy Pemberton. When I say decades, she started serving when she was like two. So, being an elected official is a cool, noble responsibility. I I've been serving this community through different nonprofits throughout the years, and being in this position as a council member, Mayor Protem or mayor, it's a really cool, noble responsibility. We have a $124 million general fund budget that we have to make tough decisions on. And I want to emphasize a point that Mayor Trujillo brought up, is that, listen, guys, this group that's made up up here, very hardworking. We do come from different political ideologies and backgrounds, but we work well together. And I want to give my colleagues a round of applause for the work they do. We disagree sometimes. Most of the times, we agree. But it's okay if we disagree. You don't want people up there agreeing on everything. You want people who are going to work together, put their political differences aside, and work for the betterment of the community, and that's what we do. We've gotten a lot done in this, well, in this current council cycle. And it's a pleasure to work with these guys. So for me, you know, we have to make tough decisions. I've said this before. I was in a recent podcast with the former mayor Mario Guerra. And I truly believe that, you know, the good thing about being a longtime Downey resident is you have a lot of support, which I do. But the bad thing is, you're going to end up pissing some friends off at some point because people are passionate about certain issues. But my promise to the residents of Downey is I'm going to continue to look at all sides, weigh things out. I'm going to lean on our professional staff. Our professional staff, who I have the utmost respect for, and I appreciate very much, all of our staff, they work hard. And in Downey, we hire the best. So all of our staff members, you know, our staff members, we went through a challenging time in 2021, and a lot of them stuck it out. I really appreciate our staff. I want to, let's give a round of applause to our professional staff here. So again, thank you to my council colleagues. The focus here is on Downey. I like being in this building. This is a place of business. We're here, we're elected to simply govern. Govern and make tough decisions and drive policy that end up benefiting our residents and quality of life here in the city. So at this time, before I close out, I'd like to share a presentation. Want to turn your ringer off, Mom? Alright. Alright, personal statement. As mayor, I'm dedicated to creating a Downey where every resident feels safe, supported, empowered. I will prioritize public safety, economic development, and quality-of-life initiatives. This includes strengthening our police and fire departments through strategic recruitment, adding additional police officers, adding additional police officers, addressing homelessness, supporting our veterans and youth, fostering economic growth, supporting small business, and ensuring efficient city services. That's a good-looking picture right there. Legacy projects. Mayor Trujillo brought this up, the southeast gateway line, Artesia to downtown. So it says, it's, it's right here, it says it starts in Artesia, but you said it ends in Artesia. Okay, both? Okay, there you go. Alright. And we will have our Downey station located on Gardendale Street, which is in my district, or close to my district. Utility relocation construction expected to begin next year in 2025. Legacy projects, something that we're all very excited about, the second building expansion. We also have the, we're going to have the groundbreaking in 2025. And this is what I'm excited about. We're going to expand the STEM program in education for our youth. I know a middle school at Stauffer, my son Lucas took advantage of the robotics program. That was pretty cool. And us coming from a youth sports background, you know, it's interesting. It's funny because, you know, when you go to these competitions, you know, they're dealing with robots, and people are getting really excited like they're watching a soccer match, and it gets really competitive. You know, some of the parents get really involved. And also, we're going to house the Inspiration Space Shuttle. Council priorities that we all worked on hard are fiscal responsibility, economic vibrancy, efficiency, adaptability, quality of life, safety and infrastructure, public engagement. These are really critical priorities because Downey, as you know, or you may not know, is the 10th largest city in LA County. So we have, that's a big responsibility for us. Financial stability, we're looking to achieve the 13th consecutive balanced budget. That's a big deal, especially if you look at the region. I credit our staff, our city managers, assistant city manager, and just our professional staff overall for making that happen. That's a big deal. And attain the 12th consecutive CSMFO and GFOA distinguished budget awards for our fiscal year budget, and attain the GFOA Certificate of Achievement award for the city's annual comprehensive financial report. Economic vibrancy, development economic development plan, identifying supportive key industries in the region, develop marketing strategies, generating economic growth through high-quality employment opportunities. Back in the day, you know, Downey was an aerospace hub. Now we're sort of a mini medical hub. Right now, we're looking at opportunities to bring high-paying professional jobs back to Downey to support walkability in some of the economic, the restaurants, the bars, the shops that we have here. And strengthen our local business to foster a thriving economy. We want to push the Small Business Month campaign, something that my colleagues and I have worked on is is a shop local campaign, Keep Your Money in Downey. Okay? And also a business internship program with Selico, which is workforce development, which I chair, and I'm proud to represent Downey in. And the initiative we're going to have, if there's any business owners, we'll talk after this. What we want to do is incentivize, get businesses, local, large and small, to consider offering our high school seniors internships and our young working adults some entry-level jobs. Okay? And we want to keep that in Downey. So efficiency and adaptability. We want our city mobile app, which is very effective. We're looking to upgrade that. And I also want to push for a marketing campaign, because not everybody, we have a close to 115,000 residents here in Downey. Not everybody knows. This is the most efficient way to keep up and let the city know, like, hey, I have an issue on my block. Or, you know, I see this nasty pothole in the street. It starts with the app. They'll get attention on it right away. And passport services at the Downey Library. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. Quality of life, Mayor's Night at the Ballpark. As stated, my family and I were big Dodger fans. That's going to be a lot of fun. If you have a chance to take, jump on that, I would highly recommend that. Men's Wellness Fair, something that is going to be new to Downey and something that I'm pushing for. Men's Mental Health Awareness is supposed to take place in the month of June. And nobody talks about it, and I understand why. There's a sort of a stigma to it. I think bringing attention to men's mental health is a big deal. A lot of men are having problems, you know, men were supposed to be, you know, tough guys, macho. And we're not supposed to let people know that, hey, you know what, we're having some issues. But I want to bring awareness to that. It's okay to ask for help. It's okay to ask for resources for whatever reason. But what I want to do is implement a Men's Mental Health Awareness Fair, bring some some different resources to the table and have them connect with some of these men and some of these families who may be experiencing some of these issues. So we also have the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall, which my colleague, I know Dorothy Pemberton, was pushing for, along with our own veteran, Lee Skwier, US Army veteran. Thank you, Lee, for pushing for that. In fact, which reminds me, any veterans here, please stand up. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you all for your service. Service Academy Fair at the Veterans Day event. And I also want to emphasize that we do have a committee here that focuses on veterans, and I do chair that. And, you know, I've been able to build a pretty solid relationship with some of our key veterans in the community. We do have some representatives here from Veterans Stand Together, Ambassador's Canteen. And I just want to let you know that there's so much more that we can do for our veterans. Okay? And here in Downey, we want to make sure that our veterans, that we reach out to them, that they know the resources available to them. So we bring different organizations together to make that happen. And I want to thank these gentlemen right here. George, Nick, please stand up. These guys are very, very critical for offering resources to our local veterans. Thank you, guys. And also, kind of good segue to our nonprofit summit, something that I'm pushing for and that we're going to make happen. that we're gonna, we're gonna make happen, is, I mentioned earlier that Downey's a very collaborative community, a lot of nonprofit organizations that, that offer really good services to our residents. And what I'm, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put together a nonprofit summit, we'll bring all the nonprofits together, VST will get an invite, and I've already talked to some folks at Downey PD and the school district. I want to be able to, be able to bring all these different nonprofits that deal with homelessness and offer services to, to families that may be going through hard times, whether it's clothing. The reason why I want to do that is because there's so many organizations, I think we, we kind of take it for granted, but not everybody knows exactly what everybody does. If we have, we can get together and get all the, the leaders of these organizations together, and so we can, we can have an understanding of what each organization does, the, the services they provide, what hours are available. Some that deal with, some may specialize in just dealing with someone who's going through domestic abuse, they want to, you know, offer them some services, or someone who's going through a mental health crisis. So we're gonna put that summit together, we're gonna, the city's gonna be behind it, PD, the school district, and I think we're gonna walk out of there and we're gonna create a database, and that's gonna be very beneficial for our residents of Downey. Also, the California Community Schools Partnership Program between the city and Downey Unified, it's kind of related to what I just talked about, but the city and the school district, comprised of 20 schools, do have a very strong relationship, we're gonna even, we're gonna strengthen that even more, okay? This is pretty exciting, the Fire Career and Technical Education Program at Warren High School. And then we're also gonna update the city's homelessness action program. Safety, new police officer recruitment, we're gonna launch a home security camera and home alarm system rebate program. That's, that's, that's key, that's preventative. It's just like, like if, if someone goes to a home, they're looking to do something bad, if they see an ADT sign out there, that's the first line of defense to say, maybe, well, maybe I don't do this. So the fact that we're gonna launch this, this rebate program, does that mean that, that residents really need it? No, but it's a way to help maybe prevent a crime, okay? It's, it's another line of defense upfront. And then new police officer recruitment, we're looking to hire, we just went through this, our last council meeting, at least eight new officers and staff to help support our, our PD here. Also, for infrastructure, residential street lighting program, installation of the first three, four blocks will be happening soon. A bus shelter remodel, phase one. Arbor Day Tree Giveaway will be giving away 250 trees to provide more, more shade and greenery here in the city. Then also, public engagement, mayor's videos, you can count on consistent mayor's videos for myself, and just engage in the community, letting them, letting them know what's going on. Town hall meetings, I, I've already held a town hall meeting in my district, but I'll be going around the city and holding those, trying to do at least one per quarter, and then coffee with the mayor, I love coffee. And the Downey, the Downey Outstanding Citizen Award, I will tell you that, you know, recently our mayors have given out Mayor's Excellence Award, and Mario's given that out a few times to very deserving residents and business owners of Downey. I, I do have some people in mind that I want to recognize. I'm gonna switch it up a little. The, there's gonna be, I, I want to hear input from the residents. I want to be able to, like I said, there's some people that I know that are very deserving that I want to recognize, but I also want to hear from the public. I want to be able to recognize somebody I've never even heard of. I want to hear from the residents on somebody who's doing good in the community. So we have a lot of people here that are doing good, they're just not getting the recognition, and I want to change that. And also, Downey Business Recognition Award, again, those of you who've grown up in Downey, who've been here for a long time, you know, back in the day, there wasn't a whole lot going on here, retail or business-wise, but now we have a very thriving small business community, and we want to recognize those small businesses. Not recessed yet, I'm gonna close. So, again, it's, it's, it's an honor, a blessing, and a privilege to stand before you. I take this role very seriously, and I'm looking forward to serving our community. Again, I, we make tough decisions here. I lean on the analytics and the information that's provided by our professional staff. And if anybody ever has any questions on one of my positions, I have no problem stating why I voted a certain way, no problem at all, that's what I'm here for. And so, before I close, I do want to acknowledge a few people. We're going back to the beginning of this meeting, we had a beautiful invocation, I want to thank my friend, Rick Rodriguez, former mayor, for doing that. I want to thank my, my lovely wife, Daisy, Daisy and I, yeah, of, of, thank you. Daisy and I, we've been married 26 years. I know, it looks like we got, yeah. I know, I didn't get married when I was 12, guys, so. But no, but Daisy stood by me through, you know, I mentioned all the work I've done in the community. We try to calculate it, it's thousands and thousands of hours that I put into this community. I didn't put in, you know, I didn't do that alone. She put that, she put those hours into that, because that's time away from home, I had a lot of fun. I see, you know, I see Captain Vegas here, years ago, even before I had kids, I coached her son, Christian, in football, even before I had kids, that was my first stint, I forgot to mention that, DJ, and now we come full circle, right? It's funny, those days, it was the Blazers, and it reminds me that, you know, there's a lot of passionate parents on the sidelines, and I don't have a kid out there yet. And then, you know, my wife's cheering, she's getting all, you know, animated and stuff, and one of the moms looks at her and says, oh, you're so excited, which one's yours? Oh, the tall one with the clipboard. I was a big kid. I want to thank my sons, Lucas and Joshua. Lucas just started his first year, first semester at Cal State Fullerton to study mechanical engineering. And I want to thank our youngest son, he's a junior at Warren High, he's a lefty pitcher on the baseball team, and he's our future retirement plan, Joshua. My loved ones, Jenny, CJ, Natasha, love you guys, thank you for being here. My sister, all the way from San Francisco, Janet, thank you. Christina, my cousin. We have interesting political debates, we try not to talk politics over the holidays, yeah. Also, my twin brother, I have a twin brother, Oscar, he's here, look at him. I got about 20 pounds on him and a little less hair. Politics, no politics. Love you, brother, thank you for being here, yeah. And his lovely wife, Leonora, thank you for being here. Also, my mother, I want to thank my mother, Stella, thank you for being here. We have a good time, we're good sports, we kind of, you know, jab at each other, but my mom, I love you so much, thank you. My mom came to this country from Mexico, from Durango, at the age of 17 years old, and her and my dad met, had four kids. My dad came from Peru, and at the age of 17, and raised four kids, four college graduates, you know, as, as immigrants to this country, so I, I love you, Mom, thank you very much. So I also want to thank my, my stepmother, Virginia, thank you so much for being here. She's here representing my father, who, who passed away in August of 2023. He was a good man, he was a longtime Downey resident, he was a US, US Army veteran, and he did a good job, so, I thank you for being here, Virginia, we love you and we appreciate you, thank you for being here. Also, in the back is my older brother, Caesar, thank you for being here, brother. He went to Warren High too, and he comes from the valley, that's kind of a far place too, right? Tarzana? Yeah, okay. So I want to close with this. I mentioned, I'm always accessible, but I will close with, again, I mentioned that we lost my, my father, my dear father. And I, and before I do that, I'm sorry, there's so many people here I'd like to acknowledge, but we'll be here all night. Love you guys, you guys know who you are, thank you. I want to close with this, my mayoral year, I take very seriously, I'm accessible, and we're gonna do great things, along with my council colleagues, I'm gonna dedicate my mayoral year to my dad, my father Caesar Sosa Senior. With that said, thank you all, wish you all the best, and really appreciate you all being here, so God bless you all, thank you.
Mayor Sosa.
Mayor Sosa.
Mayor Sosa, we wanted to recognize former mayors Kurt Kartosian and Fernando Vasquez are here, as well as council member from Lakewood, David Ariano, thank you everyone for being here for Mayor Sosa's swearing-in.
And Deacon Mario Guerra, two-time former mayor, let's recognize him as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Sosa, please take your seat out there, Dave.
Mayor, will you call for a recess so we can go eat?
I will now take a short recess, please join us in the lobby for reception, the time is now 8:06.
...
Okay, I will now reconvene the special city council meeting. The time is now eight fifty and we're going to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to say it's been great working with council member Truhiel over the past year and want to congratulate you on your appointment to mayor as well as Mayor Pro Tim Pemberton. Looking forward to a good year ahead and happy new year and merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Bradley. I will now take public comment on special council meeting items only, agenda items only. If you do not receive a number card in which to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. I will be calling blue number cards for the public comment period. I remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any other council member, city staffer, or the audience. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any public comment, written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Thank you. In person, public comment, City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have two speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have three minutes to address the city council. I remind all speakers that you must remain seated until your number is called. Speaker number one, please come forward.
Hi, you guys all know me. I've always wanted to say something nice about my city and my city council because it seems like everybody's been negative, but I'm going to be positive. I want to say something really nice about you guys. I love you all. You know, I've been in this city, let me see, I've been married thirty-nine years. I've been here thirty-eight years and I just recently semi-retired from my Albertson's job of forty-seven years, but I've done all my volunteer jobs here in Downey and I want to thank, I love my police job, chief. I love being there. I've been up close to over five years now and I love it. My parks and rec job, oh my God, I love that job so much. Thanks to, well, I got appointed by Sean Ashton and then thankfully I'm in Hector's district and you kept me on. I was so afraid I wouldn't stay on, but you did. So, thank you, Hector, and I hope I can still stay on as Parks and Rec Commissioner because I just love that job. Also, I wanted to thank, I've been with the Chamber of Commerce too for over twenty-five years, so I'm very proud of that with city Downey. And if there's any other commissions, Hector, that I can be on, now that I'm semi-retired, put me on. Because now it's a big difference in my life where I'm not working night shifts anymore at Albertson's, so I'll be wide awake for all my volunteer jobs, so I won't have to worry about that. So, I'll be wide awake for you. And I just want to, again, say thank you. I think this city is great. I think my city council is great and I think you guys all do a great job and thank you for letting me be the number one Downey volunteer girl.
Thank you, Jeannie. Speaker number two. Mr. Lee Squire, thank you once again for your service.
Thank you. Lee Squire, Vietnam era veteran, son nephew, World War II, and nephew of the Korean War, civil rights advocate, First Amendment freedoms, mayor and city council. We Vietnam era veterans are the children of World War II and the Holocaust. We grew up during the Vietnam War and the Civil Rights Movement. We fought against the foreign enemy of communism and the domestic enemy of racism. Twenty-twenty-five is the fifth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. Incoming Mayor Hector Sosa, Mayor, you will be the mayor during the fifth anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. of the end of the Vietnam War. I now present to the office of Mayor Hector Sosa picture of the Purple Heart Medal.
Thank you, Lee.
God bless the military and their families. God bless law enforcement and their families, and God bless the nation of Israel, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Is there a motion to second a closed public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Assorted by the mayor. So, at this time, we will adjourn. The city council meeting is now adjourned in the memory of firefighter Connor Lees, 29, of the Los Angeles County Fire Department, who lost his life in a diving accident in Long Beach while off duty, and Captain Michael Mercado, Mercado, a 25-year veteran of the LA County Fire Department, who lost his life due to medical complications. And at this time, it is now 8:55. This meeting is adjourned.